And the man.
Hey folks, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone to the February 22nd meeting of the Town of Canadega Planning Board. First item is I'll introduce those here and promote. At my far right is Kim Burkert, she's our remote access facilitator. So the reason we're wired is thanks to Kim's good work. Then is John Robitella, our secretary. And Scott, Scott Neal, planning board member, Bob LaCourse, planning board member. Other planning board members joining us remotely, we have Amanda Van Laken.
Hi there.
And Neil Toll.
Mark.
Or Mark. Alrighty, and we also have our attorney, Chris Nadler.
Good evening.
And Lance Bravat, our engineer.
Good evening, guys.
And I'm Chuck Wheeler, I'm the chairman of the planning board, and Sean Blatchak is the town planner. And that's our illustrious group. So let me tell you a little bit how we proceed here. We will take the agenda in order. If you haven't gotten an agenda, there's probably a couple out there that you can share, but we'll follow the agenda. We'll ask on each application for the applicant to make a presentation as to what they're proposing. We would then have the board members ask questions, make comments, and respond to the applicant. I will then open it up to the general public for any comments, questions, concerns. Then go back to the board for deliberations, and then we will ultimately take a vote on the application, all things being equal. If you are here and you'd like to speak, please go to the podium, give us your name and address. If you're with us remotely, please get our attention. I will recognize you. Again, give us your name and address, and we can proceed onward. As far as emergency evacuation, should we have to leave this room? There's two exits to my right and left. So that has been brought to your attention. I will now entertain anyone either remotely or in person who would like to address the board regarding an application or some subject that's not on the agenda. Yes, sir.
If I could, our attorney is having difficulty.
She still can't get in.
She still can't get in. Is there just a phone number rather than the that she could call into or call into the Zoom?
I have the ID.
ID password, but that that would be.
Is she just having issues with Zoom? Totally? Sometimes if you are not signed into Zoom.
Yeah, it was hard to sign in, you have to log in and have a password.
But she logs into Zoom, so that could, that sometimes is an issue. If she hasn't logged into Zoom, then goes into the meeting. So if you could suggest that to her.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, I think the phone numbers on here.
Yeah, there is a New York number right there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sean, did you want to cover some of the.
Oh, yes. You gotta say.
Sure.
Yes. So we have a new system. This is specifically for the board and for the audience. The speaker is, where's the speaker? The one square. There it is. So it points out eight different directions, so it picks up any whisper. So if any whisper, any chatter, FYI, will be public record. So just want to let you know that, especially board members as well. Rustling of papers is really loud, as is shuffling, moving. So just trying to sit still, not moving papers too much. It's just very, very sensitive.
And our meetings are recorded, so if you have a hot mic, you'll be in posterity forever. So if you have anything nasty to say about us, keep under your breath. Okay, thanks, Sean. How is your your attorney? She connected? Is that Mary Ann?
That would be Betsy, Betsy. You want to fit properly your orders, so we're not.
I'll tell you what, we could probably get started. I think if Kevin and Glenn could go over, well, the first application is CPN 21074 Thornton Engineering, representing Frontenac Holdings LLC. Owners of property at 2121 State Route 332. They are seeking a single state site plan approval for the construction of approximately 10,210 square feet of new asphalt for boat display purposes. Applicant is also requesting a waiver to reduce the front landscape buffer from 20 feet to 10 feet. This is a continuation of a hearing or a review that we were doing last, last fall. So we have, since that meeting, two new members to our board, maybe for the purposes while we're waiting for Betsy to sign in.
I'm here.
All right.
I'm here at least in audio.
Welcome.
Hey. I'm sorry, what's her name? I can change what it says.
Betsy Brug, B R U G G.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's Betsy Brug. I'm with Woods Oviette, and I'm not sure why. I have tried on multiple devices, and it does not seem to want to let me into this meeting for some reason.
Well, we're glad you were able to join us. So Glenn, as I was saying, I think what we want to do is maybe give a background on the project to the new members of the board, and then whatever presentation that you would like to make, including the, it's Betsy.
That's fine.
That'd be good. All right?
Yeah.
Hi, so sorry you can't see me, but I'm there in spirit. Kevin and Bernie DeGraas should be in the room, and Glenn Thornton should hopefully be there. They reached out to me a couple months ago after they had started the application process, came in. They, you know, established their business in Canadega back in 2018. They come back, you know, last year for an expansion of the display area for the boat sales. The, you know, I looked at them and I think that they raised, a bunch of different issues were raised during that process, so they felt they needed legal representation to kind of address some of the legal aspects of that. Got me involved. And at the same time, we really focused on, you know, making some changes and improvements to the site plan. We're in here for a site plan application for essentially an expansion related to an existing, an existing business.
Yes.
Some time has passed. As you said, you've had some change on the board, so, you know, when we talked about this meeting finally coming up, we realized this really needs to be more of a reset for us. You know, just given the, the change in, in people, the, the amount of time that's passed, the need to go back and revisit. So the, you know, I don't have any of the plans in front of me, but hopefully you've had a chance to look at the materials, and your new board members have had a chance to get familiar with the materials that were submitted, and take a look at the minutes, take a look at the proposal. We did submit some supplemental information, really intended to, you know, help inform your decision and give you some, some information about, you know, the business. They do sell new boats. They have the franchise for several manufacturers of boats. They do have a building that they built back in 2018, or pursuant to an approval in 2018. You know, because of COVID and, you know, some factors they couldn't control, things didn't quite go as smoothly or as quickly as planned in terms of getting their operation up and running. This isn't their only location, but it's, it's an important location. Canadega is a, obviously a community that is a boating community, and they really, you know, are excited to become part of that in 2018. You know, they've been learning about their business and the community as they've kind of been settling in, and as time has gone on, they've invested, you know, this is their livelihood, so they, you know, invested in this business. They want to expand the sales area because they need to expand their business operation. The site can certainly accommodate it. You know, there were some questions back, and I'll let Glenn really walk you through the site plan. But I think, well, why don't I leave it at that? Why don't I let Glenn start off and kind of walk you through the site plan? And maybe let Kevin talk to you about their operation, you know, what types of boats they, they carry. You know, I don't know, some of the things that came up in the minutes, I'm not really sure if they're issues or not issues, so why don't we kind of talk through this and, and see what questions you have? And, you know, hopefully you'll, you'll see that we, we've really focused on trying to make this the best possible upgrade to the existing site while meeting the needs of their operation.
Thank you, Betsy. Yes, I'm Glenn Thornton, Thornton Engineering. We, we wrote the same thing for the project. I wrote a color plan here because I think it's a bit easier to just see what's, what's James proposed here. There have been changes to the plan since we came in front of you in October. We will talk about the changes and then, but basically it's a 2.9 acre parcel, and back in 2018, it was the initial development included the driveway from Route 332, which is a divided highway, so it's a challenging driveway. High speeds, not a very visible location because the front property line, because of the, the large taking for the highway, we're around 130 feet from, from the near travel lane to the property line. It's quite a ways from the property line. It's, it's several feet higher than the roadway here. Back in 2018, there was a 2,400 square foot sales building built, and a, an area out front for the boats. It's in the code, it's called an unenclosed sales area for, for the boats. What's being proposed now is an expansion of the, the boat area, the boat display sales area out front, a couple areas. Back in October, when we were in front of you, there were some questions about the, the appropriateness of the landscaping that had been placed in front of the existing display area, and it consisted of only boxwood plantings. There were 49 boxwoods out there. Many more plantings than we had specified in that area back in 2018, but the wrong variety. We didn't offer all boxwoods. Also, we, we had proposed a, a much smaller stormwater facility back in this area, but the questions arose. Should we be providing a fully DEC compliant stormwater management plan for the facility? Because in combination of what was built in 2018 and the current development, we exceed the one acre threshold. So it was kind of up in the air, but we, we have built or have designed a fully compliant stormwater management area in the rear with a green infrastructure. We have prepared the SWIP for the project. We've also, since last meeting, we, we have changed the landscaping out front. What we're proposing is remove some of the boxwoods in this area, plant them in front of the new display area, and add some, some flowering shrubs, deciduous shrubs in both areas to break up the monotony of just a fully green, evergreen boxwoods out front. So that, that's basically the project. You can see on the plan, there, there's some, there's some tree cover out here. These were some arborvitae that were planted by the FLX, this new pond, the landscaping out front. But the rest of it is basically undeveloped land, and maybe in the future, there might be more development back in this area. We have sized the pond. With that in mind, if it ever does happen, the pond has been sized to accept any future impermeable surfaces back in this area. But that's it. There's, there's no lighting proposed for the facility. There's an existing sign out front that will remain. And did I miss anything, or? All right, so that's, that is the project where we stand right now.
I'm Kevin DeGraas. I'm with FLX Marine and Frontenac Harbor. Frontenac Holdings, I live at 5711 Route 90 in Curia, New York. A little bit about, about the business itself. We do have another location in Union Springs where we sell four, four boat brands. So we have four franchises for new boats. Those include moderate preparation boats, press-up on two boats, mooncraft fishing boats, and Tiger ETX. In 2018, as Glenn covered, we did purchase this sub plot of land that had been essentially abandoned, unused, idle. Growing up, at one time it had been a homestead, but when the state came and invited 332, so many years ago, they tore down the houses and bars and left some of the foundations there. They'd grown up and started to collect debris, garbage, and some boats had even abandoned boats out there. So we got that cleaned up and got, got that, what's shown here. Permit in 2018, we started working 2019. The work went slowly. Didn't really get done until late 2019. We missed the boat selling season. 2020 is really our first year in sales there. We did fall behind on the, on the shrubbery. We did try to get that done, and we did plant 49 trumps instead of 24, but we're not horticulturists, and she hired one. We did all the right colors, and we missed that, we missed that. So apologies for that. We have got a lot of feedback from customers. They, they like the boat brands we have. They're upscale boat brands. Unfortunately, unfortunately, depending on how things, I look at things, the, the least expensive boat we sell these days is about $40,000. And the most expensive boat in an inventory is usually about 150 feet or $200,000, which is an awful lot of money. I shuddered at that thought, frankly, but it's, these are nice boats. These are very, very nice boats. High-end boats. We're proud to have them. They've been, each of those franchises has been great to us, and, and they, they sell very nicely. I wish we could get more of those. I wish also they were less. We did get a lot of feedback here over 2020, 2021 from customers. The feedback we received was, your location is very, very arduous. You're very far from the road. There are many customers who indicated that they had, you know, missed our location, even though they were looking for us, or they had slammed on the brakes when they did find all the seats. Once they arrived at our location, they said, well, you, some of the feedback, you don't have enough inventory to show. You don't show your lines fully. We typically have six boats inside the building, and about eight or 10 boats along the front, unenclosed sales area. We have four franchises, with each of the franchises have a dozen or 15 models having only about 18 boats on site. We don't display that, does not display the inventory. The feedback we received was, need to show. So the plan here is to expand that unenclosed sales area as the game. Now, what kind of, well, that 130 feet that Glenn mentioned, from the travel lanes to our lot line, does make it hard to see. From an aesthetic point, you just drive by, you do have to look our direction. It's, it looks like a golf course. And about as far as I can, I can drive a golf ball as well. It's, it's a long way. So I guess we're not, we don't crowd the route, the road with the shrubbery in front. It displays nicely, it displays nicely. We do have, to the south, there's a pond and some state, state lands. The north, there's a cornfield right now. We do, we will keep a lot of green space, but also green space between us and the road. So we think it would be a good spot. Is there any questions? Are there any questions I can answer about the business, or the, the line of thought, the reason for the unenclosed sales area expansion?
How does a boat business equate to an automobile business in terms of keeping inventory? Trade-ins, I guess people trading boats in on a new boat, do you then try to sell that, you know, the trade-in? Or do you then send it to a market where someone else tries to sell it? How does, how do they equate?
I, I think, I think they're very, very similar. Motor vehicles, I think motor vehicle business across the world, whether cars, trucks, boats, any number of others, they're very similar. We do take trade-ins, and that's a necessary part of the business. In order to sell a boat or car, as, as expensive as boats and cars have gotten now, typically a customer wants to park race with the one they have. We take, we did trades, and we take a look at a trade, and typically we'd like to resell. But when we resell it, we stand behind it. So we make sure it's, it's a valuable trade-in and we'll be reliable. If it's not, we comply to take it in trade and encourage the, the customer to sell it themselves. We, we don't have, automobile auctions have, or excuse me, automobile dealers have auctions that we can sell their unmonitored inventory through. That's not as available in the boat business, so we, we do occasionally decline to take trade-ins if we don't think it's valuable enough and reliable.
What would be the percentage of new boats versus used boats on your property at any point in time? And then season, or?
It, it depends on the season. It, it changes over time. In the spring, we, we are burning, you know, we're 75%, 80% new, but then in September, it would be.
Quite honestly, rarely, rarely do you get to 80/20. We're 80% new, 20% used. And right now, far below that, and I, they're projecting that that will continue out through 2023 at least. Because if we get a used boat, it's typically sold oftentimes before it even gets on the lot. Even, you know, in the coming years, I, I would say 80/20 would be the, the high point for the ratio of new boats to used boats, especially also because as with RVs, which is a huge area right now. The majority of people entering and purchasing a boat are new boat, first-time boat buyers. Hopefully, that'll obviously lead to return buyers with nice trade-ins, but as of right now, the last several years, it's been a dramatic uptick. You just, first-time buyers.
If I could, and maybe rephrase your question, it was very, very good. Maybe we will not have, we don't have, whether in our Union Springs location in Canadega or anywhere, junky used boats. We don't do that. One, if you park a junky used boat next to $150,000 boat, really repels about $150,000 boat passenger. On the other side, when we sell a boat, whether it's new, used, brokerage, any, any type of boats, we have, we, we stand behind that. We have to stand behind that boat. And a junky used boat is going to be trouble for the customers, and trouble for us, and we don't, we don't engage in that business.
Fair to say, most of the boats up in the frontage, along the landscape there in the front, would be new boats, probably?
Yes, yes.
Expect votes, yeah.
New boats, definitely new boats in the front, the, the best inventory out. I would add, though, that especially with 130 feet from the travel lane to the, to the boats, boats will be hard pressed to differentiate from the road, whether it's a new boat or, or, or used, because the used boat is going to be very good.
The reason I really got into all of this is obviously there was an issue with, last year regarding the location of this unenclosed area, and whether it be located as proposed or further back on the lot. And I'm willing to, let's, let's talk about the site plan itself and open it up to the board.
I have a general question, I guess, maybe following.
And if I can interject, just to, to add on to the used versus new consideration. The sale of used boats in this district is only permitted in connection with the sale of new boats. So this, this lot can't turn into a used boat sales lot. At some point, you know, in connection with means when you're taking them on trade. So eventually, they would run out of new boats and be stuck with the inventory of used boats, and then they couldn't get more new, used boats to sell. So that's, that shouldn't be, at least according to our code, much of an issue.
Scott, okay, Glenn alluded to this, but as I was looking at the property and thinking about boat sales in general, you're going to have a nice, open-air sales lot. We're in Upstate New York, and people shop for boats from November through year into business, but future plans, indoor sales arenas?
It, right now, we, we do have a 2,400 square foot indoor showroom. We don't have a plan for further expansion indoor. It's something that we've started to talk about, but let's say early contemplation, but not, but no plans in that space.
Yeah, it is. Give you back to see us again.
We get to camp.
Well, certainly, yeah.
Yeah, we certainly get to see you, yeah. Absolutely.
And, and there are, one of the things we've had to do is, not because of the lack of space, but because of the way boat sales have gone, is we've expanded our, our, the diversity. So yes, we have new boats in Canadega, and we have new, new boats in Union Springs, but we have them in Eastview Mall. And we're, we're looking at those alternatives as well. So, you know, yes, it's nice to have that indoor space, but what we're finding is, because we're new to the area, we're also seeking, you know, a way to reach an audience that isn't just in our, our location. So this doesn't sound.
I will say, I met with you, I don't know, a couple of months ago, it seems like.
Seems like a long time.
Long time ago. And for your benefit, as I drove up that road, that was the day you were heading out to the mall.
Yes, yeah.
And you had like two or three boats up on the hill. I didn't even know they were there until I got to the top of the hill. All I saw was one on the side, and we talked a lot about their setbacks and your pond and things like that. And my only question after I kept on looking at your land and the plans is, the overrun on the pond, does it affect the people behind you at all? That's the only thing I really want to get straight in my head.
Even, even in the future, if there was to be a, a full buildout of the site, it still wouldn't affect those properties. The, the topography drains kind of towards the northeast now, and the pond will have, you know, since it's over, overdesigned, it's going to have minimal outflow at this time. But with full, full buildout, it's designed so that, you know, it doesn't exceed any of the, the current stormwater discharge rates from the property, and actually it will discharge into a flow refuser. And what's a diffuser does, is like a trough, and basically it's 10 foot long, so it's going to spread the flow over a wide area. Replicating sheet flow, that's, that's happening now. So there will be no adverse impacts on the downstream problems.
And it looked like most of your new project, it's going to go to the south, it looked like, for me, the flow toward the topographical area is going more to the south.
Well, we did, we did a swale design, actually, this is going to drain to the, to the east. And we did a swale design here that will take it into.
So you're not going to bring it down into the other pond?
No, no, I would like to. The DOT is pretty, pretty particular, even what you drain into there right away.
Right, yeah. Don't put answers to me. Anybody else on the board? Mark, Amanda? I guess, you know, oh, I'm sorry, Mark. I guess, you know, oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
One of the questions that I have would be related to storage of the boats. How do you do that on site?
We have a a storage location in Union Springs. This is strictly a sales area. It's not a storage location. So this location has no.
Once they're winterized during off season peak times, things along those lines, you wouldn't expect to keep them there?
No, we're as boats would not be kept at this location. I don't think the code will allow that. Rather than so that should have been.
So you wouldn't be shrink wrapped and open?
Well, we do have some boats that are wrapped.
Right.
That are on display, though, and and we also rotate them. So we'll bring some inside and then we'll put put one back out by the road. And they have the for example, if you drive by right now, you'll see a pontoon with a crest pontoon wrap over.
That's for sale.
For sale.
It is, all new.
I think when Mark said that, correct me if I'm wrong, you have storage of boats that are privately owned, right?
No, we don't.
No.
That's right.
And I think, John, make sure the record reflects that, that there'd be no storage of privately owned boats.
We advertise storage and we advertise service out on the flags right in front. But none of that is done at that location. We advertise it so people will bring us a boat to take to our storage location.
Which is where? Storage locations in.
So they bring them to Canada, where you take them to. Now, you said at the last meeting that your boutique boat purchases are done, a lot of are online. And is that? I mean, do people just come into the showroom and and decide, look at the computer, look at what they want? Does that work?
It's very diverse process. We were just up at the at the building here before we came and our sales salesman was saying, well, I came in on Saturday, two weeks ago, I think. Or three now. We had quite a bit of snow. And he said, I came in thinking, I'm not even sure that they can get in the driveway once they plow it full. And he said, turn up, well, a couple came in and today they ordered a boat. On the other hand, he's still following up with many of the people that saw boats at the mall. So they'll call him, they'll talk through an order, they'll build build an order on the website for the manufacturer. Tell them what they want. They typically come and meet with them, although they may not come and see the boat.
It's very similar to car dealers. Regarding where folks will buy right from the lot or order their preferences.
One thing about being a boat, you sure can social distance. Okay, I'm just gonna double back real quick to when we last. Oh, sorry, Amanda.
No, sorry, it it came as we were asking more questions, but and apologies for my voice here. With the storage component, I just want to understand that a little bit more. So you guys offer a storage service for boats. But you take them to a separate location, not at the one on three thirty-two here that we're talking about. I guess my question is, how many boats do you offer that, I mean, how many can you support in that storage? And what's the timeline for getting those boats from your lot to storage? Because then, I mean, it there's, I I'm hearing a lot of boats coming in and out and it's I can't even imagine the logistics behind it to make sure that where which one is going to the right place. But could you just expand upon that a bit more? And I guess more, I'm thinking of how long those boats not for sale are going to be in your lot there waiting before they go to the storage location.
Yeah, I understand the the question. So one thing about scale that is very different between boats and automobiles is the the scale of the boat business is is fractional compared to. So the car dealers will sell in two weeks. Many of the car dealers here in Canada will sell in two weeks, the same number of boats as any one boat dealer in in town. So the volumes there are much bigger. So we're we're talking about tens of boats that leave Canada when we go to Union Springs for winter storage. And typically, we like to take them the same day or the next day as they've dropped off. If the weather's not good, we don't like to pull boats in the rain or snow. So if there's bad weather, it might take a couple of days. But if we we, I don't, burn, correct me if I'm off base here, we haven't had more than two waiting to be pulled back to Union Springs. And we would strive to keep that. And so it might be an occasion where a surprising number come in one day. Mondays are favorite days for boats to drop off. But we want, we want to get them out. We want to get them trunk wrapped or decide wherever they're they're headed. We just don't want to transport them on a rainy day.
So there's there's an an aspect there that that's related just to boats, wind sea with cars. And that is, when folks bring us the boats, either in Union Springs or in Canada, they bring them with an expectation that winter is coming and they need to be covered. In other words, get the canvas off of them and the shrink wrap on them and get them winterized. So that the water that came into the boat and into the engine to cool it won't freeze. So when someone drops it off in Canada, we we typically can expect the next day or the following day to get them to Union Springs because our customers have an expectation that they are going to get winterized as soon as possible. And in the opposite direction, customers call, contact us and say, hey, I want to pick my boat up on Tuesday. So we typically bring it usually the the day before, put it on the lot and they come in and get it the next day. So that they they want their boat on a given day and we try to have it them there for them the evening before, so that they can come in the next day, early in the morning and 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 go.
So not not only is there no storage on the site, there's no winterizing. The only mechanical work that's done, I think you had said before, was doing boat prep for to to send that out the door. Would you maybe just prep the boat mechanically and make sure?
Riving, we refer to that as riving.
I think there was some concern about whether you needed grease traps. You're getting into during.
Oh, yeah, we're not, we're not changing.
Okay. For the record, we we have.
That, to be transparent, that's not planned, contemplated. At some point, we'll perhaps need to come back and have a service day, but that's not.
And at this point, it we talked about previously, that that really is, it's a new boat and and very nice used boat sales lot, and it is a sales location. So that differentiates differentiates us also from a lot of the car dealers, where you bring your your car, drive it around back into a bay. We're just not in that position. This is our sales location.
Okay, Lance, Glenn went over the stormwater work that he's proposing. Have you had a chance to look at it? I know you had some, I guess, initial concerns since there was an increase in impervious. Are you, are you okay with what he's proposing?
Yes, good evening. M B group has reviewed the the drainage proposed improvements that are shown. Being that they're under one acre of disturbance, but because it's a part of a larger common plan of development where there's been improvements that were done before and to prevent segmentation of impervious surface, that was suggested at the previous board meeting that we look at that as a whole. Glenn and his team has put together a plan. They're they're overcompensating that that drainage requirement and they're meeting it. One thing that we need to know or or add to this is that there will be a need for a stormwater maintenance agreement to the town of Canada, which is typical when we have a private entity constructing a stormwater management facility. But to answer your question, Chuck, yes, this this plan is compliant with the town's requirements and the D C requirements. Excuse me.
And that agreement requirements in your letter that you referenced in the resolution.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Okay, that takes care of stormwater. I guess another obvious issue that we talked about last fall was the location of the display area. I'm comfortable with where's proposed. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I I am, too. That, I mean, tell you, you can't see past that first line up there. From when I came up there, it was very hard to sight pass that, especially if it roll up there, very hard to pass that. It's it's not like they're right out in the open like a car dealership.
Well, my concern back in two thousand eighteen and same here, it's making you trying to minimize the amount of visual trailers. Because I think that's why the landscape buffer was, or the bushes were put in, figuring that they would grow a little height that you would see the boats, but you you wouldn't see the trailer they're sitting on. So I think if we extend that buffer as you're proposing across the frontage of the the new display area, I think that'll serve that purpose and people will see boats and not trailers.
Chuck, just a comment in that similar direction. Directly north of that, those properties are labeled as commercial and commercial areas that are expected to service agricultural purposes, correct? Yeah, just directly, I think that I think there's an agricultural region that I had learned about that covers the northern part of Canada right there. And I actually think this might have been one of the last lots where other purposes were allowed at the time. But it is adjacent directly to those, the the land is the zoning that there now is intended to allow for agricultural purposes. So if somebody was had a business related to agriculture, they could also go there. So I think that would be the, as as you're looking at the view, view shed to this project coming through, I can understand where your your concern would be valid towards having that fit together with whatever comes along there next. But I would I would agree with Bob, then in general, I think the overall view shed will still be set back. And 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 not a major concern because the the way the hill is postured there as well.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. There was concern about way back when in eighteen about the look of the building. I think the building is a nice looking building and yet it's, all you can really see is the top of it, so. And I don't think there's an issue there as far as this application is concerned. No additional lighting. I'm looking at reviews from third parties. Tim Fletcher had no comments. Our highway superintendent, the county planning board reviewed it on October thirteenth. Back on October thirteenth, they were okay and had no comment. Chris Jensen had no comments. I think that pretty well covers it. There, when the, I guess, heading toward the seeker, there was a reference to an archaeological. And I guess that popped up in your, when you did the seeker review. Did you get a no impact letter?
We did.
Okay. Is that on file with the?
It is, we we submitted it to the to the discount review. So those are really hard to get.
All right, so I'm I'm pretty much ready to move on. Support? Okay, I will open it up to anybody in the audience. Any, any folks like to comment, ask questions on this application before we take action? Hearing none. Let's move on to the seeker. It is an unlisted unlisted project regarding seeker. Does someone want to make a motion regarding the determination of non? I'll make a motion to approve seeker for determination of non-significant resolution at twenty twenty-one State Road three three two, C P N two one dash zero seven four. Thornton Engineering, representing Frontac Holdings LLC. Okay, a motion, someone want a second now?
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion. We talked about the archaeological, get that letter if we don't have it already. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, it sounds like the motion carried. So that's the seeker. Want to move on to the slate plan? Well, I'll start that motion. Motion to accept, say, site plan approval resolution for twenty twenty-one State Road three three two, C P N two one zero seven four for a single state site plan approval, Thornton Engineering, representing Frontac Holdings LLC. With four Lance, conditions still?
Yes, I I don't believe the board has added any additional that I'm aware of.
Thank you, Lance, with four. I I will suggest one, maybe. Lance, don't we typically reference the waiver requested? Since they are requesting a waiver of the twenty feet, ten to ten feet in the conditions or somewhere in the resolution? Oh, you did say that. I'm sorry. I was looking in the condition.
I'm sorry, I think it's the last whereas, just for the record, the last whereas reference. But but board, it probably would make sense just to verbally identify that you are granting the waiver. That is in fact what you're doing.
Well, the whereas says it and was granted by the planning board. So I I don't think you have to include the condition. I think I'm fine with the resolution, Stan. Did I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further any further discussions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, folks, good to see you again. Great evening. See you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Betsy.
Thank you, Betsy.
Thanks. Have a good one.
All righty. We have a sketch plan review to look at tonight, submitted by Greg McMahon McMahon Associates, representing Canada, the country of states, on our property at five 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 five, Purdy Road. And for a expansion of their park for a hundred and fifty-six new sites from the manufacturer homes. Good evening.
Good evening, Greg McMahon, McMahon Road, C twenty-two Old Road, Webster, New York. Also here this evening is Pittsburgh and family owners of the mobile home park and the the entire parcels. The parcel is just over eighty-nine acres on the corner of Purdy and Brickyard. There's an existing manufactured home development of seventy-five units. And the proposal that we're looking at and and starting work on is to expand that mobile home park to encompass the entire acreage or the entire portion of the acreage that's developable. And in our sketch plan, actually, we made a minor revision to this. We're 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 somewhere north of a hundred and fifty units. We we submitted a plan that had a.
Great, this doesn't show the road.
The connector road.
Could you pull up an, if there's, there should be an updated plan on there that has, yeah, because you lost a few units during that.
The 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 concept, the one, this is concept plan one three twenty-two. I think that one is the.
Yes, that's it.
And and that was based on a comment from Chris Jensen in town code, which you might believe it's somewhere about thirty lots. Once you exceed thirty, you need two points of access for for safety concern. So that was the, that was the only change we incorporated after the initial comments from P R C. But ultimately, we've received comments from town staff, from the town manager and so forth. uh, from the town manager and so forth, and all of these will be incorporated into the actual engineering plans as we move this forward. Let me clear to, this is a a site plan approval, this is not a subdivision, we're not creating legal lots, although your code requires that each manufactured home has to be on a lot of minimum size. There's, there's comments, um, which uh, we know that, for example, that these lots, each of these lots be identified by some type of permanent corner market, so each of the, each of the, I would say, o- owners or tenants of of their lot knows what their property values are. Sewer and water are available, uh, sanitary sewer is out on Purdy Road. Uh, water is available on Brickyard and Purdy. And uh, I know there are are plans underway for the installation of some new water mains both on uh, Brickyard, Purdy, we have those plans uh, that we obtained from the Canada Igua Farmington uh, Water District. Again, these new lots are going to be developed, very similar, if you drive through there now, uh, what you see now. Uh, they're they're for the most part, uh, larger manufactured homes, and I think I think Vince can talk more about the the development and uh, what he plans and how to see that I I can address. Engineering issues, but uh, I'd also mention that uh, at the southern portion of that property, you see a a triangular piece that's uh, a B C wetland. Uh, we've shown the wetland boundary and the underground buffer. And uh, we're keeping any development while while a lot being true slightly or uh, but there is, you know, no development proposed within that buffer or wetland. But then Vince, do you want to talk about this?
Good evening, everybody, and Vince, uh, really, did you hand out those stuff? We got a little history of of where we came from and how we're doing, how we're working.
Sure, we're a family.
I'm the oldest one now.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
We've uh, been in the manufactured home business a long time, and um, we're pretty proud of what we have, we want to continue what we have. Um, we think we've got a a pretty good outline of what we already have and where our rules and regulations are and and what what, you know, what we want to expect. We're a nice, clean, safe community, and we have a lot of, majority of older single people and uh, uh, it's been uh, very good with uh, good rapport with everybody, thank you. Hopefully, there'll be some answers in there, uh, but uh, barely or turn or really should we actually say anything else?
Vince, how does your sales process work? So you have a lot, it's a big online, and so what do you provide? What does the tenant uh, provide? Um, who does what?
We put the manufactured home on on site.
So you actually put the structure on, you built the home?
We have to put the kind, we have to put the concrete pure zone for the home to go on there. Uh, then we put the homes together, finish them off, uh, do the concrete work, um, landscaping, driveways, um, and pretty much, but best to sell the whole way on the site. People really want to see what they're getting.
So if somebody wants to have a, someone build it on your lot, you've got to, you're the, you're the contractor who builds the
Yeah, the home come, the units come together, you know, they're shipped to us, like, like a module with your, really a manufactured home, French stays on. Um, and we, we try the lot and put the home together and kind of finish everything up.
And and you own the land, right?
We own the land and and rent the site to the homeowner.
Can somebody bring a mobile home, mobile home to them, to you?
They could.
Okay.
They could, yeah.
We don't do that much anymore, I don't think.
That kind of pays out, that's it.
It's not that way so much anymore. Used to be a lot of street dealers and they're pretty much gone.
I would think you have certain standards that that home have to be, to be placed on that property, yeah. Make sure from lot to lot.
Every, every code, building code. The setup is is uh, understood by HUD, you know, they have to, they tell us what we have to do, the manufacturer tells us what we have to do. And then uh, zoning, people come and check it, make sure we're okay. Uh, we have to be certified, we go to school, um, certified retailers.
What's the price point for a single, for a single lot, is that what we say?
We're really doing doubles.
Doubles, what was that?
So, so we recently sold a double in the last uh, couple weeks over in our West Bloomfield community, and that rents um, in the one hundred and fifteen thousand dollar range.
And how many bedrooms is that?
That was two bedrooms, yeah. So you're, especially with COVID, the prices have recently gone up. Uh, so uh, we try and, you know, provide a nice product that's going to last a long time and has, you know, quality behind it. So we live in the community, we they, we own the community, so, the actual community, so we're right next door to these people, they're coming in to visit us and all that good stuff, we want to make sure that they enjoy where they live and they like it, yeah.
But this is, this is like a year warranty on the home, but we're still there to take care of them. If we want to be able to see the people in the store and that duck away and say, well, we didn't do something, but we feel that they're our friends.
So they will mortgage the, and then pay rent as well? Or is it all, is there, are there instances where it's all, and I'm asking this because we have an affordable housing team and committee, and this is affordable housing is
Yeah, but do you know about that?
Yes, yeah.
So, yeah, so um, they actually own their homes, so however they wish to purchase, that's up to them, it would be a retail installment contract. Um, much like you buy a car or boat, um, or they'll pay cash, however they like to do it. And then as far as the community, they do pay site rent, their um, taxes are included, their land, county, town, water, home, water, sewer, garbage pickup. Um, all included.
Have you done any type of feasibility study, what of a hundred and fifty plus? How many you have an interest in right now? You have a list?
So currently in Canada Country Estates, I had somebody ask me, there's a day presenting for sale, I don't have any, there's no, nothing for sale. Um, the only way we put a new model in right now is to take in an older model when it comes up for sale possibly, or in the state sale. We can buy it at a reasonable cost, take it out, redo the entire lot and then put the new home on there to sell. So we, so we don't have anybody that's first, has their homes for sale right now by owner either, so all seventy-five sites, um, I don't have any for sale.
They can sell, they can move.
They can, yeah, yeah.
Can they rent them out?
Uh, you can sublease your property.
You can sublease, yeah.
So as far as uh, this area is really uh, growing, uh, so we we don't perceive in a problem at this, this point, uh, we have a lot of people go to Florida half the year, um, Arizona, they travel, you know, you can um, winterize your home and leave for a couple months and come back and it's a second home for a lot of people, so.
Was there, was there any ever thought or did they talk to you about those mini homes that are being built nowadays?
So many homes are a little bit different than manufactured homes that we sell here in New York, um, or we're allowed to really have, it would be more a campground situation. This is year-round living.
So that wouldn't be on your property?
No.
Okay.
We wouldn't be allowed to do that, no.
Thank you. What's your demographics, mostly uh, it's my age?
So it it it, it can be anything. Um, what we do find in certain areas, we have two different communities. One tends to be a little bit, um, you know, probably eighty percent over fifty-five, even though we're not a fifty-five and older community. Uh, here in Canada Igua, we see a little bit more of a younger trend, uh, a lot of single people, um. You know, just, just kind of depends, they're all, it, it's great for all ages, really, so even if you're starting out, you're single, you're a teacher, your incomes are, you know, not sure where you're headed yet, not sure you want to make a long-term investment. A lot of them can't afford three hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes in Canada Igua, so.
Plus, we have people, they don't want a lot of maintenance, they don't want a lot of big law to take care of, you can reach that point in life where they think about downsizing for um, and the younger people, we don't really kind of get them because they want to buy a land and have a place for a swimming pool and and, you know, swing sets and food for the kids. And uh, our people are more, like I said, a little bit older and a lot of
Many children at all?
Yeah, we have, I'm, I look at the kids, it's kind of waves up the community, makes some action. We don't get too many.
Really, just where footage is, you know, just around a thousand to, you know, just under, you know, like eighteen hundreds. So for a family size of four, it's feasible, which, you know, it's, a lot of people start or end, I want to say, kind of with us, but in the middle sometimes they're, they're one of, you know, bigger places.
Yeah. Anybody have more questions on the business end of it?
None on the business.
On the business end? All right, let's talk about the the plan that's to Craig's proposal. Uh, thanks, folks. Speaking of the, I just mentioned children, uh, is there adequate play area or cozy play areas or additional play areas for uh, children?
We do have a swing sets and basketball court. Uh, there are maintenance building, uh, that we probably expanded a little bit more, but um, we've, we've kept, kept this as an open area. Uh, we have one point of access right now, and I, and one of the comments is, there will need to be, there'll need to be some more access to there. How how that is developed for open space, um, I mean, you need the code as far as area, but we'll have to, during site plan, we'll have to address that, whether there's maybe some more playsets. Uh, you know, maybe a a little trail or
Watchable courts, I mean, I, you know, the old folks like to play.
Yeah. There, there can be
Uh, benches, gazebo, I know you have a gazebo up, uh,
You have one up
In the existing area, but maybe, I I just see with this many more homes, you're going to almost need a standalone. Or do you have a walking trail or anything like that there?
Yeah, what's the plan for internal sidewalks? How are people getting around on foot?
I think, well, I think we need to discuss that uh, a little bit more with uh, the owners. This will be built as opposed to a subdivision where you would come in with planetary overall and then you'd submit a final, by phase by phase, we're gonna, we're gonna be coming in for site plan approval, which is going to be approval of the whole site. However, this is going to be built swiftly over several years, um, starting, you know, typically, for example, sewers will be coming in off of, you know, so that you probably start your development up here and work your way around, uh, again, we haven't looked at phasing yet, we would as part of uh, site plan, give you a uh, conceptual phasing, how how we might see it phased, but certainly in phase one, you need to address some of your stormwater issues, your water connection issues and your utilities. But um, we'll have to, you know, we'll be looking at exactly how how circulation uh, takes place with some of the new uh, standards, fire code standards, these new roadways are are going to be wider, larger than than what exists within the existing development um, in order to comply with those codes, so. We'll, we'll work with the, with the owners, lighting. Uh, we'll probably, again, oh, you know, we'll work together, uh, the existing development, I know there's post lights you can do for each of the units. And that provides adequate lighting on the road. I don't think at this point we're looking at any area-wide street light type lighting, you know, will be handled on a unit by unit basis.
How do you handle that? I read in the code that those lights light your area, but don't shine into everybody else's houses? How does that?
Almost the best way is to come up and take a look, because we got them on all our sites and stuff.
Yeah.
It's a really nice effect. Uh, I think it's very comfortable.
Yeah, it's not too bad, it's not too, but it's just enough to, yeah.
Nobody complains about it then?
No.
When we literally did that, we didn't want the community to look like a parking lot or a mall parking lot. We wanted it to be a whole cozy looking, and we have that in our other community, we started out with gas lights, they were actually gas, which was beautiful. And then when we went through the gas problem years ago, they made said we can't do that anymore, so we changed to electric. Now we can take them back to gas, they say, but it's too costly, but I mean, it just gives a nice soft look without being cheesy, is that what I'm saying, where you got too much.
Yes, there are, there will be no dumpsters, it's individual garbage, um, totes, recycling. Um, because once, once a week, there is, there is uh, gas, natural gas and electric and and uh, for the utility codes, all of it will be underground. Once, once you're coming off the right way, everything is required to be underground. Um, again, we've got to look, we haven't, we're at sketch plan or concept, as we get into site plan, um, we've got to look at the sewer, uh, how far can we go with gravity, is there going to need to be a pump station? Uh, we won't know that until we, we get into the nitty-gritty details, but um, and and we'll work with MRB as we do when everything in Igua, um, that, when that sewer was put in, I would have to assume that they looked at the development potential of the surrounding land, um. Again, I think, I think capacity, I'm fairly certain we've got existing capacity, uh, we've got enough capacity to handle.
I, I would nail that down, if we get too far, we'll make sure we got angle good, because we had more projects that uh, I think they're in pretty good shape as far as sewer capacity and they almost to the point of approval, and they
Especially in that area.
Well, we ran into that back when we did Center Point with Ontario County.
Yeah, Center Point was one, yeah.
And uh, and ran into an issue, um, not our issue, but a pump station that didn't have sufficient capacity and and the county had to correct that, but I'll, uh, again, we'll, we'll consult with MRB and and
Yeah, well, they'll, they'll probably ask for like a flow flow monitoring and to make sure what's currently in the system and what it's designed for, and this is really going to be all on you and the applicant to to provide it to the source, service.
The system is fairly new because um, it was put in for Purdy Road.
Yep.
Um, and Purdy Road, and then we were able to get in with it. And so I think we take like forty thousand a year, um, just paying, paying for that sewer money.
Well, that's good, I mean, it's not good yet, pay forty thousand, but it's good you contributed, uh, so you were part of the assessment?
I know.
Well, if you're part of the assessment, then you certainly have been right to be. To use it, yeah.
Oh, yeah, well, we will be addressing that.
I'm sure you've, you've looked at section one thirty-four of our code regarding all the requirements of manufactured homes. This, this is a new experience for me, this is the first manufactured home, well, we've had since I've been here, and uh, there's a, there's a lot of uh, parameters you have to check out in terms of uh, uh, well, the lady, the dumpsters, the drainage, uh, providing parking spaces, uh, you know, the minimal size, I, I think all your lots are over seven thousand, seventy-two hundred, seventy-two hundred, yeah. And uh, we talked about the park in, the park in open space. Buffer, a buffer, fifty-foot buffer. Fifty-foot buffer, you know? Yeah, I can see that on the plan.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get into some of the detail, I, I know one of the things that that we're looking at a little, you know, as we get into this, we said right now, we've got with this uh, addition, we have five points of access, three on to Purdy Road and two on to um, Brickyard, and and I think we, we'd like to reduce that somewhat um, as as we can, particularly, uh, I'd like to eliminate one of the access points. As, as we can, particularly, I'd like to eliminate one of the access points on Purry Road. We do need. To provide the necessary code requirements for access, but. We'll be looking at, we'll be looking at that and, and again. Taking a look at the buffer, make sure we've got. The appropriate distances, again, this is a, a fairly large scale plan, so while it may look. Like a small sliver. When you scale that up, I, I believe we are, we do, right now, we need that.
Yeah, that's why, I mean, I'm glad you do say the sketch plan, because it gives us a chance to let you know what we see. What we see in the code and then how you can fix it before you come to us.
You know, we, we've shown, we've got one hundred and fifty-seven lots or something out here, I think. You know, certainly, we're not gonna be increasing and I would see the total number of lots as we fine tune this. We'll be going down. Hopefully not significantly, but, but to accommodate. A lot of the comments we've, we've seen, well, you know, that's, that's our intent and that's why we're here tonight.
It's a comment if I might. Related to the access piece, I think, I mean, part of the reason that there's so much access requirement is for. Making sure that you have fluid, fluid flow, but also emergency access. And the two times that I've actually been through there, the parking scenario that creates with the residents there with them parking on the streets and in other areas. Can sometimes make that difficult. So as you're looking to potentially reduce the number of access points, points in under the road, you might want to think through. A strategy that ensures that there is full access on a regular basis as well. I've just, I know that's a difficult challenge to control of how people park and things. And I noticed in the new plan, there are a few more parking areas. But that would be something that I would be concerned about as, as you talk about reducing the number of access points into the property.
Yeah, and, and we agree, and I think what we, we look at, which this plan doesn't demonstrate is that. Your code requires two spaces for each of the manufactured units, but. I think in appropriate areas, we'll probably incorporate some separate parking areas. That will accommodate groups of units, for the instance, when somebody has a party or birthday party or. Some event and they have people from outside the area, we'll, we need to incorporate some additional parking. That'll appear in the site plan process.
You turn, excuse me, Amanda.
Just something in regard to that, is that a lot of these are older people and they don't have many parties anymore. So when you're thinking of younger people, they have lots of guests, that's not the case in this. I mean, we have people that don't come out of their house for, hardly to go to the mailbox, so, I mean, that's, it's just the age group that you have. And I know the age I am, I don't have parties like I used to have, you just don't do it. So although we need to have something for access, it's not like it is where you're in a development where there's a lot of young people that may have.
And there is, there is an existing area that, by their. Storage building right here that they provide some availability for someone with a. Motorhome or a boat, RV, it's a store, there, there aren't many, I would think even with these new, newer units. There's probably more than sufficient area. Around this building, again, they're not, they're mostly an older population, so there's, there're not a lot of.
My thought process wasn't around large gatherings, my thought process was around just access. And I don't know, in the times that I was through there, I don't know if it was a simple matter of service providers or, or what have you. But especially in the cul-de-sac that exists already, for example, there's a tendency to like to park along that. And I would expect as the demographic that you're discussing would have more of those service providers, they're gonna have people that are coming and going. But it's looking for that access, I'm just making sure that you have fluid, fluid flow and that you can actually get in. Because the, the last thing that you want to have is a block into traffic during an emergency scenario or something like that. But that's what I'm referring to, not so much the, 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 the large gatherings related to parties and things. It's just the routine cable persons coming over, the furnace cleaners coming over, whatever, what have you. That might create a demand for extra parking need.
Understood.
This is in the powerful Brook Greenway. Does that have any effect on the review of this at all, other than just acknowledging it's in the greenway?
Yes, you know, we are gonna again and talk about. Connectivity and more global. It's a, an integral strategic location for that area.
Does that restrict? Does it put any? Controls or anything on what? Any NRI features in this property?
Well, the wetland for sure, what you're gonna be seeing out of it.
Slopes are okay.
Everything else looks generally.
There is, there is, there is a.
Yes, by the creek, but. Yeah, it's on the other.
The A committee will look at it through the, the review. Chris Jensen had some comments, I, I assume you saw his comments. And our town manager, Mr. Finch had some comments, I assume you saw those. Take those under consideration, certainly we will. Sharon Reynolds also had comments, and I guess.
Chris?
I have a few comments if, for the applicant. I'm assuming the area with white roads is a separate lot right now from the area with gray roads?
It's all, it, it's all part of the same lot. It's not, it's not a separate exiled parcel, it's just a portion of the eighty-nine acre lot that's been developed.
And it will remain like that?
Yes, it will.
Oh, okay, so you won't need any, so you'll share facilities without any recorded easements that they'll, that'll be. All, all okay, this will probably be subject to a park and rec fee.
I was gonna ask you that, Brett, yeah, is it per dwelling? In this instance?
Per dwelling, at, at the time of, I don't know if building permit is issued for a manufactured home, but for whatever permit is issued. It will be, park and rec fee will be due at that time. And that, the last thing I had was if the applicant could sign the chargeback agreement. In the meeting right now.
So you're certainly aware of the Auburn Trail and its intended. Diversity of, there's a couple of options, I guess. One option to stay in the existing railway for the most part would be out on Purry and down Brickyard. There's also an option for running it around the back of, of your property. So I guess. Certainly be aware of, you know, that we're gonna need some sort of affordability. And, and whatever help you can give and making that Auburn Trail reality would be certainly appreciated. So certainly keep that in mind as you. Anybody else have any? We talked about. About lighting, storm sewer. Is this, would this be visible from three thirty-two, the back lots there, or is it far enough off three thirty-two?
Just put a distance, this is. It's, it's, it's fairly flat, but I think this was poor. Yeah, so, I mean. Right now, none of, really, none of this is visible from three thirty-two, but. Yeah, I mean, there may be, they're fairly, we're talking one story. They're not, it's not gonna be a high visible, visibility area.
There's a, there's a few evergreen trees along that, right along that.
It's prime ag lands, again, the agriculture committee will take a look at that. Will you probably require an increase in your maintenance staff to be able to service? Make sure that you.
We have ninety-six over in West Muppil, pretty accustomed to what needs to be done.
I do, and I also left the feasibility center. It's the newest. This is the latest update from last, last week.
Oh, great, okay.
We did meet with Doug Finch and I had talked and we had decided that it was going to.
Well, we had, we had it right there, obviously, we wouldn't keep doing that on your property without permission. But there are three scenarios that, that we're looking at for locating the trail. And scenario B would be. Down, it would come this, this way.
Yeah, I don't like that at all.
So that's in.
I'll tell you why I don't like that at all, because older people. See strange people going by their back door yard around their property. I will be getting phone call after phone call after phone call, I'm concerned, there's some guy out here, he looks a little strange. I don't know what they're doing, and I can just see that is big time.
We've seen many, in many of our communities. Town hall, single family, the value of those labs increases significantly when. There is public access.
There's younger people, you're dealing with older people that can't get outside and say, what are you doing on my.
I, I understand that too.
And I see them dropping gum wrappers and candy wrappers and banana peels and stuff all along there. And I'm telling them, the older people, you're gonna have people in it, unfortunately, telling you it won't make it. I see that coming, that that happened there. I don't have a problem with it going along, you know, across the road from us where it's not right in their back door yard kind of thing.
Do school buses traverse into the community or they pick them up at all? If there's children to be.
There are the, the entrances.
Okay, so they do not come onto your street?
We've lived in our communities, so we've experienced what all people experience as far as other rooms.
And your, your mail, your mail system is, it's a gang mailbox, it's, it's, you have it strategic locations around. So again, what Mark's talking about, make sure there's adequate room on, I tried to recall when I was out there. If someone can pull off the road, get out, get it, go to their mailbox, open their mailbox, get their mail without blocking traffic. We'll be looking for that. Any other accessory structures that you plan to build as part of this, storage buildings or? You think that what you have can store your equipment and mowers and?
We have two buildings for that right now.
Is the one building in the, what ones? So that's a pre-existing. Yep, you got it right there.
Yeah, I look, I, it's, it's probably would fall if you, if you stick that out, it'd probably not, it's in the ball. Not in the wetland, but that, that will be built at a time when. And that's, that's actually. Just adjacent to that building is the pump station that was put in, maybe six, seven years ago. When that sewer was built, we put a pump station down adjacent to that building. And all of the, majority of the sewage from the seventy-five units runs down an existence sewer into that pump station. Then it's pumped back up around and discharges on Purry Road.
Doesn't discharge on Purry Road.
But that, I think that was, that was done at the same time that that sewer was put in.
And, and when was that done again, was it vintage?
Maybe about two thousand and fifteen.
Yeah, that's the other thing, I was thinking that your existing. Infrastructure, whether it can handle additional, because you're depending on.
Yeah, we did, you know, we might tie in something to that pump station. If, if we've got capacity and it's, and it looks like the way to go, but we did over design it slightly when we put it in. It was actually designed for. I think hundred units and there's probably only about fifty, forty tied into it right now. So if, if we can re, utilize it as part of this, but. It would be, it would be our intention that the, any of the gravity sewers that are put in or the water mains. That they would all be dedicated town sewer. And water. In easements.
Aw, I was just sitting here thinking, wow, we won't have a lot of easements because it'll be all privately assisted.
There'll be east, easements to, to the town and, and there's gonna have to be, if whatever stormwater facilities we have, we're gonna have to do. Access easements for the stormwater facilities and stormwater maintenance agreements. You know, so there will be easements, there'll all be easements to the town or the Kennedyville Farmington Water District. As far as, there, there's one property owner, so there's no cross easements between property owners. There, they would strictly be various easements that the town would require, whether they're utility easements or access easements. Or stormwater maintenance easements.
So the water main in, say, that cul-de-sac, existing cul-de-sac, that's maintained by the town?
That water main is private.
I would just. So I would assume as you extend that water lot system, your water system throughout the development, it'll be yours to own and maintain.
Yeah, we would be coming new connections off of the main. We'll have that discussion with the proper. You know, in the case of water, it's gonna be with the Kennedyville Farmington District. In the case of sewer, that would also be the. No, that would be, I, that sewer would be candidate, would be Farmington. Sewer water, that, that all goes to. The sewer plant over on McNamara. It doesn't go back. Doesn't go back to Ken, to the Ontario County. So, yeah, our dealings with sewer water would be with the sewer water district.
Let's see, I think, again, we're just giving you, you know, things to look out for, red, red flags here.
Hey, Chuck?
Yes, Lance?
This is Chris, actually, but I've got a Lance-type comment. I'm, I'm staring at this plan and it looks pretty crowded. And I hate to recommend losing some, some units. But that triangular open space in the middle of the circular road. If you lost a few units on the road, then that wouldn't be a, a enclosed open space, it would be open to the road. It would alleviate some of your overcrowding, but it, more importantly, it would make that. Open space open as opposed to enclosed. I've got a concern on rental properties when there's. Enclosed spaces, like if you put four apartment buildings corner to corner, you've got an enclosed courtyard. And that's not the best idea with rental property. Because you don't have, you know, it's not public space, it's, it's not owner occupied, it's, it's, it's tenant occupied. Um, cause you don't have, you know, it's not public space, it's, it's not owner occupied, it's, it's, it's tenant occupied. Um, I, I think the applicant should consider losing some of those units to make that open.
Yes, we, we've already, we will be doing that.
I mean, don't get me wrong, Greg did a pretty great job of squeezing a lot of units on here, but I think you gotta lose a couple.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's, with, with every engineer, we always try and get the most we can with the first shot. We know we're gonna get beat up when we start the process.
Other than I would say is what we said earlier, is that the tenants, a lot of them are elderly, they do not want big yards to take care of, maintain. Some of their first things they ask me, because I do a lot of the selling, is. Do you have somebody that can mow the lawn for me or that can shovel my driveway or shovel my driveway because I just can't do it anymore? And so that's a concern, it, they aren't like younger people, I remember being young and you wanted lots of space and you wanted a big house and you wanted a lot to take care of. But when you reach. Middle fifties and I'd say, you want less to take care of, you want to get rid of a lot of stuff you've got because you just cannot do it physically. To take care of all of that, so that's why, although the idea of having a bigger lots nice to younger people, not so nice to older people necessarily.
They might, I think what's.
Take some of those lots out.
Right, no, I.
What Chris was referring to was making that large common open space area more accessible, so that the people.
Right.
You know, they don't have that big lots, like if they wanna go to somewhere where there's more space.
However, there again, I'll say.
But they don't have to maintain.
A lot of them don't even walk down to the mailbox because they are, have walkers, they, they mainly stay in their houses and a lot of them, or they have porches on their houses or sunrooms and they go there. There's not a lot of people that go to open spaces and, and take advantage of that.
Maybe build it, build it, they will come.
I'm sorry?
Build it and they will come.
Well, we have a conceivable there, nobody's ever sat in it, all the years it's been there, nobody comes there, um, and so.
Well.
It's just a concern of mine.
Yeah, you look, I, I think as, as planners, we've gotta look at the obligation of making the project accessible to.
Yeah.
To all parties and uh, I, you know, be able to get from, you know, the western side through that. That the uh S-curve area where you have lots over to that open space area, I think you have to crosswalks and.
Yeah.
Yes, to do that, so I think that's what we're referring to and as Chris said, maybe make the area. A little, little bigger and we had talked earlier, early on about providing some recreational.
Right, so, you know, we, we understand.
Okay, all right, um, is there anything on your checklist that you're?
I think Greg's been answering my question.
Okay.
We always, I try to touch on some of the.
Yeah, most of them, I've been checking them off as you can go.
Yeah, yeah, cer- certainly a lot of, a lot of that, or, or many of those items um are not typically addressed at the. They get fleshed out.
Give you a heads up.
As we start.
Is most of your heating as a propane? Uh, they? On natural gas?
Okay. Underground.
Yep, so that's all. So you do provide a, see, pads for sheds? For the, for those that want them?
Your code has a maximum size which. Would.
In the distance.
Yeah.
Distance of the house and shed, yeah.
Typical uh shed.
We don't go over eight by fourteen. They, they send me two videos in places where they didn't place, you know, so the distance between the home, we try to manage the siding of the shed with the home. So it's all. Looks nice together. And, and they're, they're a good shed, a Fisher shed, it's not a tin, things will blow down if on fire. When we first started out, we always looked around, see what some of these other communities did that we didn't like. And a lot of this, the sheds was a little big thing and, and having things around the home that shouldn't be around the home. Uh, so we, we designed our rules and regulations to eliminate those headaches and those unsightly things. We, we thought if we could keep the sheds where they're supposed to be, that's a lot, that's a lot nicer situation to be all over. And, and get a decent, a decent shed.
That's good, that's good. Uh, Greg, look at the, our design manual for private drive, this is a private drive, that's here, and that's got standards as far as, I think you're, you're twenty-two feet, wasn't it, on this one? Remember?
Yeah, it's, it's twenty-two, uh, I've gotta work with Chris a little bit, against some of the new fire code. Uh, we have to be, I know every, every place that there's a hydrant, we have to be twenty-six feet. Um, if, if you can't count shoulders, uh, if there were concrete gutters, you can count the concrete gutter, but you can't count. Ravel shoulders, so we will have to, once we get our hydrant placement, when we get our mailbox placements, then we've got the road. The road is gonna be twenty-two feet, then it might be twenty-six feet and, and it's gonna have to accommodate. The various features we have to put in um.
Okay, just check the standards as far as that.
Yeah, well, I.
Drive cross-section private drive.
Yeah.
Uh. I think I pretty well covered my items. Anybody else have any uh things to recommend to the Burks uh? Ms. Nann as far as moving forward? Okay, well, and any, you know, tonight was just, you know, sort of a day-to-day, uh, you know. Get beat and greet type thing and certainly anything we said here is not a commitment on our part, uh, that's part of the sketch plan review, uh, so. Go forth and.
Invite you all to come out and drive through, we'd love to have you do that, we'd love to have to stop and talk to any of the people that live there, they're our best salespeople. John's one of our best tenants. And we don't really normally refer to them as tenants, they're really residents and they're friends, we've had people in both of our communities. That have been with us thirty or forty years and every time we lose one, it's very hard because they've been with us for so long.
Sure.
And, and at the time that I sold, I started selling homes over fifty years ago. And I always said to people, if I sell you this home, this is gonna last your lifetime and beyond. And no matter what, as long as you keep the home up, so it looks nice and you'll buy by the rules and regulations, we will never, ever say that you have to take this home out of here. And we have kept that all along, sometimes people say to me, well, there's still, we have very few older homes. We have maybe eight of them left in, in Picturebook Park in West Moonville. And once in a while, somebody will wanna buy a hundred thousand dollar home and I'll say, yeah, but there's like. Uh, fourteen wives sitting here, you know, this, I, you know, and I said, I sold that home, those people keep that home up. They're not going anywhere unless they wanna go somewhere. Because that's what I promised them. And uh, so what, what we do is as we get an older home, as Mary said, um. And we can purchase it from an estate or from someone that wants to leave and do something differently. If we can, we buy that and then we take that off, redo the site as she said, and put a new, usually double on it. Because that's what's really selling today mostly. Um. And in that way, our communities have stayed up to date with the industry. Um, that was one of the reasons why if, if you do drive out through Canada, you'll see. A lot of doubles in there that are, are fairly recent doubles and we did that so that if we ever did expand down the road somewhere. That it wouldn't look like, oh, here's the old section and over here's all this brand new beautiful area. We wanted it to all be cohesive and so everybody lives in the beautiful area. So, um.
Can you, can you get better people, people wanna spend money on landscaping? So.
John, how long have you been with us, just out of curiosity, I can't remember how many years it's been. Nineteen ninety-nine. Right on, so that, and, and that's what we get a lot of people, there was a long time, John's one of our very best.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, folks, uh, excited on, have to deal with this.
Oh, the minutes.
That's, yeah, get the minutes from our last meeting February eighth. Uh, I'm gonna wanna make a motion.
Thank you.
I will move the second minutes from February eighth.
Okay, I will second it. Good job as usual, John, thank you very much, that was a tough meeting.
Thank you all for your time because we appreciate it, it's late and all of you people that are there with us, I appreciate your time too and yours too.
Nice to see you, John.
Good night.
Okay, I got a motion second, hold favor.
Aye.
Aye. We have a uh release from uh Mr. Overeem. For a property forty-seven eighty-nine, county route sixteen, he is requesting twenty-four hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty cents. From his uh erosion and sequestration controls surety to be released, I assume that's the total amount. So.
Yeah, there's.
Can I get a motion to effect? I'll make a move.
Oh, sorry, it's really, it's hard to hear.
It's hard to understand who's talking here. I'll make a motion to. Uh, release the security, uh, surety letter of uh twenty-four hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty cents for Harold Bobbery. A second?
Second.
Okay, motion second for the discussion, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Overeem gets his release. Uh, we've no referrals from town board tonight. Foundation to the ZBA, also from Chris Jensen, either way, uh, comp plan.
We do, I do want to mention as it relates to the comp plan that we have a kickoff meeting for our project teams, CIC project teams next. Tuesday, three one at six thirty, uh, if you haven't received, received that invite, it's open to anyone, um, but specifically the teams. Of the CIC, which I'm the chairman of the law. A team, history team, the environmental conservation board.
Gateway sign.
Gateway signage, we're inviting parks and rec, special events. History, I'm sure I think there's that history, what am I forgetting? Anybody who volunteers for the town is welcome.
And it is, uh, you can zoom it.
Yeah, so we're going over um the team's accomplishments from twenty twenty-one, looking ahead to twenty-two. And uh, talking about again, our uh five objectives for twenty-two.
Okay, anybody have any uh reports they wanna make regarding uh the assignments they got at the last meeting, uh? Any status reports or?
I have one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I reviewed the solar plan uh from ours, town and others, met with the egg committee chairman. Uh, and started working on some plans on what I thought might help uh solar farms, large solar farms in our area. He came up with these uh, can you see it, Mark? With, with these kind of uh options, and I'll, I'll just kinda go over them really quickly. It kinda adds to what we just talked about with the manufactured home, uh, fifty-foot buffer. I would like to add that into the code for large-scale solar entries under two twenty dot sixty-two dot two. Basically a fifty-foot uh zone that's comprised of densely planted tree shrubs and brushes, blah, 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 uh, basically around it, so basically to block it from the community. Same idea as uh, as we just talked about. I did change it a little bit from the manufactured homes and it basically I added uh from each adjoining properties, which was not on the other one.
Yup.
So, uh. So I, I kinda just wanted to make sure that I commerce everybody on that one.
That's a great, that's really right, it's just not one buffer, it's the whole site.
The whole buffer, yeah, cause I was starting to think about what if somebody wanted to develop the land behind them with something else, so. That was that thought, uh, and then adding to same code under five is adding A and D is basically a um, an assurance. A surety uh to the town that they have enough money to decommission. There's a lot of towns out there now that's, that's requesting the surety and uh MRB would have to be, provide the cost estimate. In order to do that, uh, there's a lot of discussion, I think legally needed to do that. Was that correct?
A decommissioning bond is already in the code, I think.
It's not, it does, not a surety bond, I don't, I never saw one at.
I'm pretty sure it is.
Okay, I'll look at it again. And then the last thing.
I believe under the decommissioning section, it should be called out that a decommissioning estimate is required, but it's been since a long time since I looked at it, but we require it, I know that.
Yeah, you require an estimate, we require the estimate but not a surety.
Yeah.
Uh, for financial security that, that's gonna happen. You just, we just asked for a cost estimate.
I got you, you're saying for clarifying that it's not only an estimate but actually the surety be provided.
Yes, yes. And then the last thing is there's no definition for what a buffer is and I wanted to add that into the code, uh, one seventeen for definitions of what exactly a buffer is. That's where I started, uh.
What's the current buffer, is it a ten-foot buffer?
There is no, there is no, there's nothing at all.
Yeah.
We, we asked for screening on the last one and we got a row of trees.
Yeah, I remember his driveway was going up the side, he had to be ten feet off the property after that.
And then ten feet off of the uh east water.
Some, some communities have buffers from residential properties, some of them have them from the actual physical house to the closest solar panel, some have them buffer from the roadway. It varies depending upon where you're looking.
So this was, with my idea was uh. Uh, and you know, we don't mind you having solar panels, but uh, there's not a lot of benefit for the town to see them every single day. Uh, and then this way would uh allow solar panels in a certain area, kind of minimize it, I think, but then still allow it and then still not uh hinder the eyesore of all.
I, and I, like we were saying earlier, Bob, uh, I think we just, Gary, you and I were talking about doing something solar, I think it was also. Maybe looking at the districts where it's currently allowed and maybe uh restricting some of those uh. The world and some others down possibly, that, that it's too.
It's too wide open for zoning, right, it's allowed in many zones.
So let's uh probably look at the zones too. Well, good, that's a good first start, yeah.
Thank you, Bob.
Make sure Shawna gets a copy.
I will, I'll send it to Mark and uh Amanda also.
You said it.
If you send it to me, I can get it out. Thank you, sir.
And rightly so, uh, anybody else?
Actually, just a question on that, how are we defining a solar farm, is it a solar farm when it serves two or more properties?
Yeah, so the, there's two in our code, a small and a large, the only difference between a small is a thousand square foot and anything over a thousand is a large. The one thing I was considering, Mark, is uh, we just had a special use permit on a house off of Middle Cheshire. Who exceeded the a thousand square foot and I started thinking, you know, why, why was that, and when he asked for, I think, a twelve K system. Do we need to increase that thousand to maybe twelve hundred? And through my research, I found out that an eight kilowatt system, a ten kilowatt system is really good for a big house anyway.
Yeah.
And that it only takes up about eight hundred square feet, so he must have been really asking for the moon, so I think we're still okay with a thousand as a ship of small. Uh, and it's on a personal property that only can be done on personal property, then a large is anything over a thousand on commercial.
Got it, thanks.
I have a question, I guess.
Sure.
I've started with the five G research, there's not a lot of. Um, there's, I found a community down near New York City that's just thinking. Um, what is the board, what are we looking for as far as guide, so when I'm doing our research? It's so new, I'm surprised at Mark. It's so new, I'm surprised that more larger communities haven't really started this, you know, there's a little. I'm learning a lot, but what do you look for, what is the town looking for?
I would say as planners, I mean, we're not electrical engineers, we're not trying to design these systems, but these. Uh, devices uh that are used for the five G system. Are going to be, from my understanding, a lot of them are gonna be placed in the right away, they're gonna be on poles, whether they're. Uh, dedicated poles or poles that are already there, they're just gonna hang the, hang the trans- transmitter on it, I.
Has Verizon or anyone come to us to to discuss five G?
Well, not that I know of.
Because it would seem like they would be a very good resource, I use Verizon because they're probably one of the larger ones, but.
I know that you had to have more antennas on five G.
Yes.
A lot more, yes. Yeah, that's what we talked about is how do we integrate that into our.
Yep. They said I'm I'm learning, but it's it's, there's not a lot out there.
It was just a big article about uh five G around an airport.
Like turn that over to you.
In the airport, yes, yes, you know, that, you know, I'm finding some examples that that shows the difference.
So I guess.
Sound like the cell.
It's this thing, do we have to try to get out ahead of it, that we can control what these things look like, where they're placed? I mean, to some degree, I guess we have limited control because it's like cell towers.
Right, and what we can charge is limited as well, because you know, it's this building, you can charge.
Uh, franchise.
Yep.
Uh. UFC or whatever they, you know, New York allows that.
Okay, well, like I said, at the next meeting, I should, yes.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of things, I mean, most, most of them are gonna get mounted on existing cell towers. Uh, as depending on the radius that they have, anything after that, and I learned this one on Access Ontario's board. Um, they wanted to bring that the last mile to the home and they started looking at putting them on telephone poles. When you see the ones that are mounting on poles, then, I mean, they. They look like boxes or tubes that are suddenly attached to it, so. Uh. Almost like that you're adding lighting to a telephone pole to a certain extent. But I think getting permission to put those on a telephone pole is probably gonna be harder than getting us to give them permission. Just be, just because of the revenue generation and everything that comes with that, of how that gets founded, so. That might be a further problem out, will they figure out how to do some of it? All of the five G stuff that I've seen so far has been on existing cell towers, do we have any? Do we have any control over any of that? If it's already existing?
We don't, unless they go off the tower and onto the pad. Or expand the current pad, that's when our site plan kicks in, any change that they make to that.
Towers.
Yeah, absolutely, they can co-locate on a tower, no problem, but if. This network, for example, wanted to come in and and move the fence and expand the pad and that's when it triggered. Would have triggered site plan, they since decided it would be in their best interest to figure out how to get on that pole without coming back in here. Uh, because that's when the the review starts.
And there's a, an aesthetics aspect, which I know.
Yes.
Um. You know, we're we're going through uptown with three thirty two and we're thinking, how how can we get rid of all these utility poles and? And and the last thing we wanna do is start adding more stuff. Or more poles, uh, or more eyesores or something like that, if there is a way. We can control it within the parameters of what are, you know, what we can do with it. Can't step on the UFC or utility commissions toes, but uh if there is some control. You know, let's try to find it and be out ahead of it, uh so that we don't get hit with the application. For a hundred and fifty poles throughout our community with the new controls.
A lot of them are on light poles.
Yep, all streetlights.
Yeah, streetlights, light poles.
Doesn't that look nice? Looks like an eagle, uh osprey nest. Alrighty, well, keep on pushing on, uh. Anything else, you talked about the thing next week. Let me check my notes.
I won't be here next week.
No, not remote.
Oh, not, not at all.
Not.
Not in.
Available, he is excused.
No Bob at all, okay. Uh, project team kickoff, we talked about that.
We are, I did wanna add that we will be meeting, the town will be doing a training day for boards here. In April, most likely, so bringing in speakers. Lance probably will speak, probably Chris Nadler on Lanny's Law, you know.
Right, do the sexual harassment too.
We can do that, actually.
What are you doing that, Shawna?
Uh, that will be, we decided, we were thinking of March, but that was probably gonna be the end of April now. I'll let you all know, but it would be an opportunity, Mark, for you to and Scott to probably get almost all of your training.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking and if, I'm assuming you guys will have an agenda, so I don't, I don't know that if I, I don't know if I need the harassment training, I'm pretty good at train. At harassing people already.
You actually are required to take that. Everyone here is.
At my.
Oh, I don't know, I don't know about that.
I have to do the New York State training, so that counts already.
Yeah, Bob, you have that.
I had it, I got it from the FAA.
Alright, so you've already had, yeah, we'll figure that all out.
Just give them your.
I mean, it's gonna be a weekday, I'm assuming, so if I know.
We're gonna do weekday breakout sessions, track, track. I don't think we're gonna do it Zoom, I I just don't think that that's.
No, no, I think it's uh, by then hopefully COVID's long.
Well.
Gone and we could sit in this room and. Have like we did a couple of years ago.
Right.
It was good.
Yeah, it was.
Soil Conservation Service.
I'm an Ontario county man, I wanna do a presentation.
Okay, uh, next meeting's March eighth. Uh, we've got Scott Harder presenting the Mr. Cersei. Uh, on property, he has a sketch plan for subdivision. Mister Thornton will be back with cook properties for uh. Uptown landing, again, a sketch plan.
That's our first form based code application.
So, oh, not one of the form based.
So you all might wanna take a look at that.
And Venecia will be in for uh mending his hammerhead at the end of Lake Breeze Way. Uh, Mark's engineering is representing. Mister. Who is going, doing a redo on his property on three sixty four. So that's for the eighth and then you can see what's coming on twenty second, so we've got the. We got some things ahead of us.
If you wanna, I did wanna note that the Regardellows, it's not a public hearing. No, we're not gonna be discussing anything, we're just establishing, we're declaring our intent to become lead agents.
You, you remember we said with the other application that we declared and then we waited thirty days before we did. Open the hearing and uh.
And start.
Though I think we declared and opened the hearing at the same time last night, right, John? But this time we're going to uh. Declare, wait the thirty days, then have it here.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? The group, thank you everyone, uh Amanda, hope you're feeling better, Lance, hope you're feeling better.
Thank you all.
Amanda, do you have the strength to make a motion?
I do, I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight at seven fifty nine PM.
Good night, everyone, thanks, all in favor? We're outta here.